Microsoft.
All right, seeing seven o'clock on the official clock, we will begin. So first is roll call. Commissioners?
Tara Jones.
Marty Markeith.
Monica Allers.
Scott Jensen.
Oh, blame.
Hello, Burton Wald.
All right. Approval of minutes, did anybody have any comments on the minutes? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Through the minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, citizen input. This is for input from any citizen on items not on the agenda. Would anybody like to speak? All right, thank you. New business. This is docket SDR four dash two three PLA. PLA one dash two four, MIP two dash two four, MIV two dash two three. To allow for construction of three new restaurant buildings and associated site amenities, property line adjustment, or two lot minor partition and a minor variance to allow for a reduction in lot width. Site is located across three existing tax lots. Addressed as five one six three one Columbia River Highway. Assessors map number. Three two one three E zero zero one three zero zero. Five one six three five Columbia River Highway. App number three one three E zero zero one three zero one. And five one six two four Southwest Old Portland Road. App number three two one three E P zero nine nine zero zero. Subject site is east of Southwest Jenny Lane and Southwest Old Portland Road intersection. Format, this is a consolidated limited land use decision and quasi judicial hearing. Limited last land use decisions, site development review, property line adjustment, and minor partition do not allow verbal testimony during the hearing. However, written comments are permitted prior to the deadline below. Quasi judicial decisions for the minor variance allow verbal testimony during the hearing as well as written comments. Interespective comments may submit to city. As of yesterday. So. Now on to my script. I am calling this limited land use decision and quasi judicial public hearing to order to consider the application for site development review. SDR four dash two three, property line adjustment PLA one dash two four, minor partition MIP two dash two four, and minor variance MIV one dash two three. Testimony and evidence must address the criteria that apply to the decision as described in the staff report, or to the criteria the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Persons may speak only after being recognized by the chair and must come forward to the microphone and state their name and city for the record. Only testimony that is relevant to the application will be considered. If the failure to raise and clarify an issue to afford all parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal on the issue. In regards to the minor variance, planning commission will conduct the hearing in a quasi judicial capacity. In other words, like a court trial where the planning commission serves as finders of fact, verbal testimony is allowed for a quasi judicial decision. This is a consolidated hearing, and the site development review, property line adjustment, and minor partition applications shall be processed as a limited land use decision, which does not take verbal testimony because it does not require interpretation or the exercise of policy or legal judgment. Therefore, any verbal testimony shall be limited to issues related to the minor variance approval. Does any planning commissioner wish to declare any ex parte context or conflicts of interest regarding this matter?
No conflicts of interest, being a small community, I recognize some familiar faces in the audience. That does not.
Does any party wish to challenge any commissioners impartiality or legal capacity to participate in this matter? Right, seeing none, the order of the hearing will be the staff report, then the applicant's presentation, and proponents, and opponents, and rebuttal by the applicant, and a staff response. Thereafter, the hearing will be closed for consideration of the matter by the commission. The decision of the planning commission can be appealed to city council. All right, going through that, hand it to staff.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you all for taking the time to review tonight's materials. I know particularly the staff report was pretty long, so appreciate that one. A bit of housekeeping tonight before we get into the report. We had one public comment come in after the staff report was published on June twentieth, which is allowed. Public comments can be made until the twenty sixth, but because it was after the publication of the staff report, we've included a copy of the public comment, and we'll summarize it in our staff remarks today. And at the end, if there's a motion to approve the three restaurant application at the end of this agenda item, staff is asking that it include, the motion include language to adopt the amended June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four staff report with that. So I'll now begin by going over the subject site information and observations of the staff report, which tonight begins on page eleven of your packets. I'll then list the relevant approval criteria for the proposed development and let you know which pages correspond with the findings of each chapter. And then lastly, I'll let you know staff's recommendation and where you can find our recommended conditions of approval. After that, we'll pause in case there are any questions for staff before moving to the applicant. So starting on page eleven, subject site. The subject site consists of two existing legal lots and three tax lots. Tax lot thirteen hundred is approximately zero point six one acres and is currently occupied by two single family homes and a shed. Tax lot one three zero one is approximately zero point five three acres and is occupied by a single family home and a barn. Tax lot ninety nine hundred is approximately zero point nine five acres and is currently occupied by a single family home and a shed. Collectively, the subject site is approximately two point zero nine acres. North of the subject site ordered from west east is a boat repair shop, a commercial building shared by a massage facility and a title company, and a tax preparation service. Northwest of the subject site due to tax lot ninety nine hundred being a flag lot is a single family home. West of the subject site is Southwest Old Portland Road, and to the west of that is a single family home and Southwest Jenny Lane. South of the subject site from west to east is a group of multifamily buildings, a personal service complex, a gym, and a financial management office. And then east of the subject site is Columbia River Highway and a railway, and then to the east of that is a thrift store. Subject site and its surroundings are zoned expanded commercial and are designated as commercial on the comprehensive plan map. Subject site is not located in the special flood hazard area, and there are no wetlands, slope hazards, or water courses on or near the site. Under observations requested approval, the applicant is requesting approval of site development review to allow for the construction of three new restaurant buildings, one of them to share their building with a retail store and associated site amenities. The applicant is requesting approval of a property line adjustment. Or the lot line between the two existing legal lots of record. The applicant is requesting an approval of a two lot minor partition to create a new legal lot of record. And then the applicant is requesting approval of a minor variance from the minimum lot width for commercial and mixed use buildings in the EC zone for one of their three parcels. Consolidated land use applications, the applicant is requesting approval of four land use applications, site development review, property line adjustment, minor partition, and minor variance. On their own, property line adjustment, partition, and variance require staff approval. However, since the applicant is requesting a consolidated application and site development requires planning commission approval, planning commission will be the approval authority for all four applications. Approving site development review, property line adjustment, and minor partition are limited land use decisions subject to chapter seventeen point one six four, and approving a minor variance is a quasi judicial decision subject to chapter seventeen point one six two. Pursuant to seventeen point zero one point oh five oh, section B, public noticing for the consolidated application was provided in accordance with the quasi judicial chapter, since it requires that more people notice, so the higher standard is given on noticing. Then all four applications would need to be approved for the applicant to be permitted to complete the project as proposed. Right of way and public improvements, the property has frontage on both Southwest Old Portland Road and Columbia River Highway. Old Portland Road is classified by our transportation system plan as a two lane collector without parking, which requires sixty feet of right of way width comprised of twenty four feet of travelway, two six foot bike lanes, two five and a half foot planar strips, two six foot sidewalks, and two six inch utility areas. Old Portland Road currently has a right of way width of sixty feet, thirty six feet of vehicular travelway, and two five foot sidewalks. Travelway is wide enough for the required vehicular travelway and the bike lane widths, and so bike lanes will be added when they are added to the entire Southwest Old Portland Road corridor. The applicant is proposing to plant two street trees along Southwest Old Portland Road as allowed by visual clearance requirements. The recommended conditions of approval will require the applicant to install an accessibility ramp on the subject site's Old Portland Road frontage to be aligned with the curb return to the northwest of the Jenny Lane and Old Portland Road intersection in conformance with ADA. Columbia River Highway is classified by the transportation plan as an arterial, which is regulated by the ODOT Highway Design Manual. Based on characteristics of the street and surrounding uses, the manual would classify Highway thirty as a commercial corridor, which recommends five to six foot bike lanes, eleven to twelve foot travel lanes, twelve to fourteen foot left turn lanes, and six foot sidewalks. This section of Columbia River Highway currently has an eight foot bike lane, twelve foot vehicular travel lanes, fourteen foot left turn lane, and a six foot sidewalk. Since this section of Columbia River Highway meets ODOT's guidelines for a commercial corridor, no street improvements will be required on this frontage. Vehicular access and off street parking, the applicant is proposing a driveway entrance from Old Portland Road and another from Columbia River Highway. In addition to the entrances from public streets, the applicant is proposing to provide a drive aisle connection between the Columbia River, or the Columbia Three Restaurant Complex and Peak Performance Parking Lot to the south, that was that fitness gym that we approved about a year ago. One vehicular parking space is required for every hundred and twenty feet of gross gross floor area for eating and drinking establishments, and one parking space is required for every four hundred square feet of general retail sales. Sat, the satisfaction of parking requirements is evaluated in each parcel rather than the development and subject site as a whole. Building one would be a twenty two, a two thousand two hundred fifty square foot eating and drinking establishment requiring nineteen parking spaces. Following the recording of the property line adjustment and the minor partition, so when the lots are reconfigured the way the applicant wants them to end, tax lot thirteen hundred is proposed to provide twenty six parking spaces, which exceeds this requirement. Building two would be a three thousand four hundred eighty three square foot eating and drinking establishment, including a potential nine hundred eighty three square foot expansion, which requires twenty nine parking spaces. And following the property line adjustment and partition, the tax lot thirteen oh one is proposed to provide twenty nine parking spaces, which meets the required minimum. And then building three would be a forty seven hundred square foot building split evenly between an eating and drinking establishment and general retail sales requiring twenty six parking spaces. And when the lots are arranged the way in their final configuration, tax lot ninety nine hundred is proposed to provide fifty nine parking spaces, which exceeds the required minimum and would allow for the entire building to be developed as a restaurant if desired. The applicant is proposing to provide an additional connection to the subject site from the Peak Performance Fitness to the south, which would eliminate two required parking spaces from the Peak Performance Fitness site in their original land use decision. To sustain the compliance of Peak Performance while providing the desired connection, the applicant is proposing to record a shared parking agreement between tax lots thirteen hundred and seventeen hundred, and because tax lot thirteen hundred is currently exceeding the parking requirement, this would be allowed. All uses providing drive in services shall provide a reservoir for inbound vehicles. Drive in restaurants are required to provide a capacity of ten vehicles at a time in the drive through lane. Buildings one and two both meet this capacity requirement. Commercial uses require the provision of two bicycle spaces per primary use, or one for every five required vehicular spaces, whichever is greater. Based on the vehicular parking requirements, building one would require four bike spaces, building two would require six, and building three would require six. The applicant is proposing to place a bike rack capable of holding six bikes next to each of the three buildings. Traffic generation, the applicant submitted a transportation impact study, which includes trip generation estimates, a safety analysis, and an operational analysis. After accounting for internal trips and pass by trips, the study projects that the proposed development would generate one thousand four hundred twenty six primary weekday daily trips, including a hundred fifty four in the morning peak hour and exactly a hundred in the evening peak hour. Safety analysis observed crash patterns from the most recent five years of accident data. None of the identified intersections on Columbia River Highway have crash rates above ODOT's ninetieth percentile. The study states that while the proposed development will generate trips, it is unlikely to alter or worsen crash patterns. Study states that traffic control measures such as radar detection may reduce accident rates. However, the applicant will not be required to install a radar detection device, nor has ODOT requested this, since the crash rates of concern are an existing condition prior to development. The operational analysis included a drive through queuing analysis, where twenty two drive through restaurants across seven different franchises in three different states were observed. And so this is just people sitting in the parking lot and watching the way that cars go through drive, uh, drive throughs. And they observed that the maximum average in a drive through at one time was seven vehicles at any given time throughout the day. And so to be more conservative, the eighty fifth percentile was used in this transportation analysis, and so that gets us to eleven vehicles. And then both of the drive through restaurants that are proposed would be able to accommodate eleven vehicles in their drive through at a single time. Additionally, the analysis found that all study intersections are currently operating acceptably per jurisdictional standards and are projected to continue operating acceptably through the twenty thirty horizon year. ODOT provided a referral comment, which is on file as exhibit thirteen, stating that no mitigation measures have been proposed and that this conclusion appears to be reasonable for the proposed development. Under utilities, there is currently an eight inch PVC sewer main in both Old Portland Road and Columbia River Highway. Applicant proposes to utilize the existing main and lateral in Old Portland Road to serve building three, and connect two new six inch laterals to the main in Columbia River Highway to serve buildings one and two. The applicant is proposing to install a rain and garden retention basin over two twenty foot deep dry wells in each of the three proposed lots to manage stormwater. The proposed system is designed to retain and infiltrate a one hundred year storm event with no discharge runoff from the subject site. And then for water, there is currently a twelve inch C nine hundred water main in Old Portland Road. The applicant is proposing to install three two inch service laterals to serve the three buildings, and a six inch lateral to serve the onsite fire hydrant that's being proposed. Since the service laterals are proposed to run through multiple properties, the recommended conditions of approval will require the applicant to establish a private utility easement for these water laterals and any other utilities that cross property lines. Landscaping, screening, and street trees, the applicant has submitted a land, a preliminary landscaping plan on file as exhibit four I, which depicts the provision of trees, shrubs, and ground cover throughout the site. The proposed commercial use would directly abut residential uses to its northwest and to a portion of its south. Buffering and screening will be required where the subject site directly abuts residential uses. The applicant is proposing buffering and screening where, uh, where commercial use would abut the residential use if not for the Southwest Old Portland Road right of way. When this is the case, buffering but not screening is required. The applicant is proposing buffering along the western edge of the property as allowed by visual clearance requirements. The applicant is proposing to plant two summer sprite linden street trees along the Old Portland Road frontage, and eight summer sprite linden street trees on the Columbia River Highway frontage. The applicant proposes to plant thirty five total new trees on the site. Property line adjustment, the applicant submitted a PLA exhibit in, as exhibit four F, which depicts the existing and proposed adjusted lot line, their lengths, and the area of the two lots before and after adjustment. The applicant is proposing a property line adjustment between the two existing legal lots of record as the first of two steps to establish the desired property line boundaries between the three restaurant buildings, so that they can separate their parking and maintenance responsibilities. The two adjusted lots satisfy all dimensional requirements of the EC zone, and the adjustment does not propose to create any new lots. Minor partition, the applicant submitted a minor partition exhibit, which depicts the division of tax lots thirteen hundred and thirteen oh one, the length of each lot line and the area of the three lots. The applicant is proposing a minor partition to divide an existing legal lot of record into two as the second of two steps to establish the desired property line boundaries between the three restaurant buildings. Satisfy all dimensional requirements of the east, the three lots satisfy all dimensional requirements of the EC zone, except that tax lot thirteen oh one does not meet the minimum lot width, and the subject site has public facilities available to serve the development. The applicant will have to apply for a minor variance for the substandard lot width of tax lot thirteen oh one. Minor variance, the applicant is applying for a two lot minor partition, and section seventeen point six eight point oh five oh, which governs the dimensional requirements of commercial and mixed use buildings in the EC zone, establishes a minimum lot width of a hundred feet. With the minor partition, the applicant is proposing for tax lot thirteen oh one to be ninety five feet wide. This constitutes a deviation from the development code of ten percent or less, and so a minor variance will be required. The applicant has applied for this minor variance as part of their consolidated land use package. The development code allows for minor variances when it deviates from its standards less than ten, ten percent or less, and certain other provisions are met, and the proposal meets the required conditions to grant a minor variance from the base minimum lot width requirement. Public and private agencies, the City of Scapoose interim city manager, public works director, interim public safety director, Columbia County Building Official, Scapoose Rural Fire Protection District, Columbia River PUD, and ODOT have been provided an opportunity to review and comment on the proposal, and the city engineers' comments are also incorporated throughout the staff report. Scapoose Public Works Director provided a referral comment stating that they have reviewed the application and have no objection to its approval, provided it meets all criteria set forth in municipal code, public work design standards, building and plumbing codes, and all state and federal regulations. Additionally, the Public Works Director stated that they would prefer the developer utilize the existing sewer connection stub from Columbia River Highway to serve buildings one and two, if at all possible. And so we're just asking that the applicant work with the city during construction document review in order to establish an amicable plan for sewer service at that time. The Public Works Director noted that the existing sewer on the other side, the Old Portland roadside, may not be in good condition, and so it should be video inspected to confirm size, slope, and overall condition. We've put that in our conditions of approval, and if insufficient, it'll need to be replaced. The Scapoose Rural Fire Protection District provided a referral comment that details requirements related to addressing, street naming, hydrants, fire apparatus access roads, marking, sprinklers, and alarm systems. The applicable requirements are included in the recommended conditions of approval under fire safety. The Columbia County Building Official provided a referral comment stating that they have reviewed the application and have no objection to its approval as submitted. The Columbia River PUD provided a referral comment with the following requirements and information, which are listed below. The PUD requests an eight foot public utility easement along the southern boundary of tax lot ninety nine hundred for the underground primary conductor that runs along the southern property line of the tax lot. PUD will work with the applicant if they desire to move the conductor line further to the south. The PUD requests an eight foot PUE along Southwest Old Portland Road and Columbia River Highway, and then any necessary lighting of the public right of way must be approved by the City of Scapoose before requests are made to the PUD. ODOT submitted a comment after reviewing the transportation study and stated that no mitigation measures have been proposed, and that this conclusion appears reasonable for the proposed development. Notice of the application and hearing was mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the site on June seventh, twenty twenty four, and also published in the June fourteenth, twenty twenty four edition of the Columbia County Spotlight. As of the date of this report, but this is, it's changed, uh, so now two members of the public has, have submitted public comment. The first member of the public to submit comment was Linda Bolin, who stated that their only concern is the amount of traffic that will be coming and going from the subject site. Ms. Bolin states that this traffic is difficult at most hours to get in and out of the area. Ms. Bolin is fearful that this development would lead to an accident, stating that just one restaurant is going to cause a lot of issues with traffic. The applicant provided a written response, which is on file as exhibit eleven A to Linda Bolin's public comment, which summarized the traffic impact study findings regarding the expected trip generation rates, the safety analysis, queuing analysis, access points, and site distance, and the performance standards used to evaluate the impacts included in the City of Scapoose's transportation system plan. ODOT standards, the American Association of State and, uh, State Highway and Transportation officials. Staff concurs with the applicant's response and adds that the proposal meets the city's standards for driveways, visual clearance, off street parking, and drive through reservoir capacity. The second public comment that was submitted was from Lawrence and Cheryl Caline, uh, which can be found as exhibit fourteen in the updated packet that I gave you all today. Linda, or excuse me, Lawrence and Cheryl Caline's primary concerns are regarding fencing, noise, lighting, traffic, littering, signage, and potential impacts to their property value. The applicant provided a written response, which is also in that packet, to the Caline's public comment. The applicant states that the fencing and trees will be provided between the restaurant site and the Caline's home as required by the city's standards. The applicant mentioned that the property owner may elect to adhere to some of the Caline's requests, such as taller brick fencing, but that ultimately it will be the property owner's choice, so long as the proposed methods of buffering and screening conform to the city's standards. The applicant speculated that any tall signage would be placed east of the restaurant site, given that the highway is the major arterial, and visual clearance requirements of Old Portland Road make it difficult. And visual clearance requirements of old Portland road make it difficult to put a sign there. The applicant concludes by stating that the concerns of the Calines are valid. And will be taken into consideration, but the property owner is exercising their right to build new commercial spaces in the EC zone. City staff also provided a response on file as exhibit fourteen B and in that packet to the Caline's public comment. Staff's response covers each section of concern raised by the Calines in terms of the applicable code requirements and what the applicant is proposing to address them. General staff finds that the concerns raised by Lawrence and Cheryl Caline. Are either already addressed in the staff report findings. Or cannot be considered within the land use process since they're not related to criteria or are above and beyond what the criteria require. Staff concludes by stating that the developer may voluntarily decide. To address any of the Caline's requests, but the city cannot require that their requests be made as part of the land use process. So moving now to the findings of fact. Staff's findings related to Scapus Municipal Code, chapter twelve point one zero, visual clearance can be found on pages seventeen through nineteen of the packet. Chapter seventeen point six eight expanded commercial pages nineteen and twenty. Chapter seventeen point one hundred landscaping, screening and fencing pages twenty one through twenty five. After seventeen point one oh four, street trees pages twenty five through twenty seven. Chapter seventeen point one oh six, off-street parking and loading requirements, pages twenty seven through forty. Chapter seventeen point one two zero, site development review pages forty through forty seven. Chapter seventeen point one three four variants pages forty seven through forty nine. Chapter seventeen point one five two, land division, major and minor partitions and property line adjustments pages forty nine through fifty four. Chapter seventeen point one five four, street and utility improvement standards, ages fifty four through sixty eight. Chapter seventeen point one six two, procedures for quasi judicial decision making, ages sixty eight through seventy two. And then chapter seventeen point one six four, procedures for limited land use decision making, page seventy two. Based on the findings of fact and the materials submitted by the applicant. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve site development review four dash twenty three. Property line adjustment one dash two four. Minor partition two dash two four. Minor variance one dash two three, subject to the conditions of approval listed on pages seventy three through seventy eight. For this applications. Staff is recommending forty seven conditions of approval with a mix of standard conditions. And then a few related to this site and development specifically, this is. This is a larger number of conditions than usual, but it's largely because there are four applications consolidated to one decision, so. That concludes staff's presentation, we can take any questions that you may have before the applicant's presentation.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions for staff at this time?
Um, I do. So when it, um, when you were talking about the required sewer to be updated based on the condition, does that mean that, um, the. Actual inspection and video of the scope will be provided to the city? Do you?
Yeah, it gets submitted to the city engineer and public works director.
Okay, and then, um. Based on the condition, if it's just like a clean out, there's different conditions for sewer lines, so if it just needs cleaned out. Or there's bumps or whatever's happening with it, will that actually be required to be replaced?
Let Chris take that one.
May bring the microphone up. Uh, we, we would look at the video and determine if it needs to be replaced based on. The condition of the intrusion, if it's, if there's some minor roots that can sometimes be, be taken care of, but. Oftentimes the roots will get in and they'll break the seals on the, on the pipe joints, because that's where they come into the pipe generally. And then, and then, uh, you know, it's generally not good to have, um, leaking seals and sewer laterals, because it just adds to our. Our groundwater I and I, so. There's a number of ways you can repair that. It's oftentimes it's just replaced, but if it's, if it's in the highway, um, there's other ways to do that.
Any other questions for staff right now? All right, then I'd ask the applicant to come up and make their presentation, please. And really do speak very much in the mic, so you get.
I've got two.
Yep.
So Will, you're gonna have to share screen from that laptop, so the share button in the upper right. And click on window from there. And then the Chrome one with your presentation. Then if you want, you can hit be dots on the right of the black ribbon. And it'll go into a present mode. All right. How's this? Do we need more mics?
Okay, you just have to get uncomfortably close to it.
All right, well, thank you planning commissioners for hearing our land use review. And we look forward to further discussions. I will try and cruise through this as there is some overlap, so I will do my best to edit that as I go.
You introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Will Ublocker, I am the architect and applicant. Slash owner representative on this project. All right, the property consists of two existing legal lots and three tax lots, the, uh, for a total of two point zero nine acres. The project proposes the demolition and or relocation of four existing single family homes, including three accessory sheds. And one barn structure to be replaced with three commercial buildings. One twenty two hundred and fifty square foot fast food restaurant with drive-through window. Uh, two, a twenty five hundred square foot fast food restaurant with drive-through window with an optional building expansion of approximately nine hundred and twenty five square feet. Resulting in thirty two hundred and forty five square feet. Um, and three, a forty seven hundred square foot building that will be divisible into two lease spaces, one will be a retail space for a total of twenty three hundred and fifty square feet. And the second will be a sit-down restaurant also at twenty three hundred and fifty square feet. The subject site is zoned expanded commercial, including the surrounding properties that allows for light manufacturing, office, retail sales and related commercial uses. The development proposes. Uses that will fall under retail sales and service that includes eating and drinking establishments and or general retail sales. As part of this, uh, site development review, the subject property will require a property line adjustment, a two lot minor partition and an associated minor variance to the two lot partition. The property line adjustment will modify the existing property line in order to provide tax lot thirteen oh one with the required minimum parking spaces. As well as tax lot thirteen hundred. Property line adjustment will provide each parcel with a clear boundary of parking stall and maintenance allocation rights and responsibilities. The result, the resulting parcels will be in conformity with all dimensional standards of the zoning districts. A minor partition application will split tax lot thirteen oh one and tax lot thirteen hundred into two legal properties. As a result of this division, a minor variance application is required. As a minimum lot width of one hundred feet cannot be achieved for tax lot thirteen oh one. The proposed development meets the criteria for granting a variance as it meets the minimum deviation standard of not exceeding ten percent. Or ten feet short of the required one hundred foot lot width. The planned development has frontage on Columbia River Highway and Southwest Old Portland Road and approved access on both fronts. New commercial driveways will meet the minimum width requirement of twenty four feet wide and will be twenty six feet located off Columbia River Highway. There is an existing right of way along Columbia River Highway and Southwest Old Portland Road that will remain as part of this development. Southwest Old Portland Road is in conformance with the dimensional standards of the twenty sixteen transportation system plan and a future city project will add a continuous bike lane to Southwest Old Portland Road. Appropriate. Columbia River Highway is classified by the TSP as an arterial road and regulate, regulated by the ODOT Highway Design Manual. This section also meets ODOT's guidelines for a commercial corridor and no improvements are required. The pedestrian walkway will connect Columbia River Highway and Old Portland Road with reasonably direct connections between primary building entrances. And all adjacent parking areas. Walkway is adjacent landscape buffering and parking lots are equipped with curb stops to mitigate safety concerns. And be raised six inches and curb along the edge of the street. Walkway that connects to all building entrances will adhere to the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. Where a walkway crosses a driveway or parking area, it will be clearly marked with contrasting paving materials. The project site will have maintained visual clearance areas where the property is adjacent and intersects with a public street. Visual clearance area, areas will be located at the intersection of the project site at Columbia River Highway and Old Portland Road. Shrubs will be maintained to not exceed a height of three feet within the visual clearance area. No parking stalls, trees planting, fencing or signage will be located within the visual clearance area. That will impede visual sightlines between three feet and ten feet in height. The parking requirements are based on the greatest use possible of each building on each parcel. Parking requirements for eat, for eating and drinking establishments are calculated at one space per one hundred and twenty square feet of gross floor area. Based on square footage, building one requires nineteen total stalls. Building two requires twenty one stalls, a possible building extension would require an additional eight parking stalls. Building three is equally split between an, between an eating and drinking establishment and retail use. The restaurant portion requires twenty total parking spaces. Retail portion is calculated at one space per four hundred square feet of gross floor area, floor space that would require six parking spaces. For purposes of calculating the most intensive use of the retail portion. Parking totals will, will be based on an eating, drinking establishment and will require twenty stalls. The total number of parking stalls based on the largest square footage of the buildings and the most intensive use of the spaces is eighty seven parking spaces. The total number of parking spaces provided is one hundred and fourteen, including six accessible parking spaces. Parking will be ninety degree parking, that is nine feet wide by nineteen feet long, except for accessible stalls. Accessible stalls are twelve feet wide by nineteen feet long and compact stalls are nine feet wide by seventeen long with four inch wide striping. Uh, vehicular access easement will be provided for tax lot, um, ninety nine hundred, thirteen hundred, thirteen oh one, and with peak performance. Tax lot seventeen hundred located directly to the south of the proposed development. Each tax lot will have their own dedicated parking spaces within the adjusted property line boundaries. No shared parking agreements will be needed, except tax lot thirteen hundred will have two dedicated parking spaces for tax lot seventeen hundred, which is peak performance. Uh, that will be located adjacent the new connection directly north of the property line. The bike racks are located near the building entrances and will not impede or create a hazard to pedestrians or vehicles and will not conflict with the visual clearance requirements. The total number of bike parking spaces required for commercials uses is two spaces per primary use or one pro five vehicle spaces. Total required bike parking stalls is eighteen. A transportation impact study report has been conducted and provided as a proposed development will generate more than ten peak hour trips or more than one hundred daily trips. The TIS addresses the applicable elements identified by the city engineer consistent with the traffic impact study guidelines. The TIS demonstrates that adequate transportation facilities exist to serve the proposed development. And identifies mitigation measures that resolve identified safety problems and proposed public improvements are designed and will be constructed consistent with public. Works, work, works design standards and access standards in the transportation system plan. Based on the drive-through queuing analysis, the queue storage provided at both drive-throughs will be adequate to accommodate queuing from the proposed development. To accommodate the internal traffic movements between the proposed development and the Fred Meyer Shopping Center. Adding stop signs and pavement stop bar markings on all approaches at the existing connection along the Fred Meyer Side Access Road should be considered. As potential improvements under build-out conditions. And onto the landscaping, as part of the landscaping and screening requirements for new development. These standards will help reduce noise, glare and air pollution, this occurs at the northwestern portion of the property abutting a single family home. As well as the southwestern portion that abuts a multifamily residential building. At both locations, a ten-foot setback in landscaping buffer and screening zone will be provided. The minimum improvements in a buffer area shall include one row or grouping of trees. A five-foot fence or approved alternative will also be provided at both buffer zones. The southwestern landscape buffer is ten feet deep and will contain seven medium sized trees spaced at no greater than twenty five feet apart. And based on the square footage will require seventeen one gallon shrubs. The northwestern portion of the development has a ten-foot landscape buffer that will require ten medium trees spaced at no greater than twenty five feet apart. Based on the buffer's square footage, this will require twenty six one gallon shrubs total. Remaining north and south property lines are not required to meet buffer and screening requirements as they abut similar use properties. The street frontage along Columbia River Highway is a hundred and ninety five point nine five feet and will require seven hundred and eighty four square feet of landscaped berms or shrubbery. Street frontage along Southwest Old Portland Road is eighty six point eight five nine feet and will require three hundred and forty seven square feet of landscaped berms or shrubbery. The special provisions will also require one tree which shall provide a canopy of at least three hundred square feet upon maturity for each fifty lineal feet. Of street frontage or a fraction thereof. The street frontage along Columbia River Highway will require four canopy trees. The street frontage at Southwest Old Portland Road will require two canopy trees. The planting area between the property line and the existing sidewalk ranges between four feet and four feet six inches on both Columbia River Highway and South. Southwest Old Portland Road. This will require a total of eight street trees along Columbia River Highway and two along Southwest Old Portland Road. Street trees are further limited in quantity due to the visual clearance requirements along both frontages. There are a total of thirty five trees being planted as part of the proposed development. Any refused container or disposal area, area and service facility such as gas meters and air conditioners that are visible from a public street, customer area, public facility or any residential area will be screened from view by placement of a solid wood fence. Masonry wall or evergreen hedge between five and eight feet in height. All refused materials will be contained within the screened area. Official lighting on all off-street parking facilities shall be designed to deflect all light away from surrounding residences. And so as not to create a hazard to the public use road or street and shall not exceed intensities. Or adjacent streets as included in public work design standards. Three buildings are situated on the site in order to maximize. Uh, adequate light, air circulation and firefighting access by locating the buildings near the property corners. Privacy and noise is maintained as building one and two are located adjacent commercial use occupancies with a five-foot landscape buffer. And building three has a ten-foot landscape buffer that will further help screen any noise, lights or glare from the adjoining residential uses. For crime prevention, windows will be located facing inward on the site that will overlook the next adjacent building so that areas vulnerable to crime can be surveyed by the occupants. Mailboxes will be located in lighted areas having a vehicular or pedestrian traffic. And the exterior lighting levels and angles will be oriented toward. Areas vulnerable to crime and light fixtures will be, be provided in areas having heavy pedestrian and vehicular traffic. Fixtures will be placed so that light patterns overlap at a height of seven feet which is sufficient to illuminate a person. Easements for sewers, drainage, water mains, electric lines or other public utilities will be dedicated or provided for in the deed restrictions and where lot lines are traversed by a water course, drainage way, channel or strain, there will be stormwater easement or drainage right of way conforming substantially with the lines of such water course. And such further width as will be adequate for conveyance and maintenance. Property owners will make arrangements with the city, the applicable district and each utility franchise for the provision and dedication of utility easements necessary to provide full services to the development. A minimum eight foot, eight foot PUE will be provided along Columbia River Highway and Southwest Old Portland Road frontages. In accordance with Columbia River People's Utilities District Standards. It is understood that an eight foot public utility easement will also be located along the southern boundary of tax lot ninety nine hundred for the underground primary conductor. The stormwater drainage system will be separate and independent of any sanitary sewage system, surface water drainage patterns. Patterns will be shown on every development proposal plan. Inlets will be provided so surface water is not carried across any intersection or allowed to flood any street. All stormwater analysis and calculations will be submitted with proposed plans for public works directors review and approval. The site is sloped in a general direction from the northwestern portion of the lot to the southeastern corner. A rain garden retention basin with two dry wells will capture the majority of rainwater for tax lot ninety nine hundred. Located at either side of the main entry connection to Southwest Columbia River Highway are two main, excuse me, are two more rain gardens. Uh, rain garden retention basins with dry wells that will capture tax lot thirteen hundred and thirteen oh one respectively. There is some overlap in the stormwater runoff requiring a stormwater maintenance, maintenance covenant and access agreement that. There is some overlap in the stormwater runoff requiring a stormwater maintenance covenant and access agreement that will need to be signed and recorded with the county to the benefit of the city. New dry wells will be required to be registered with the DEQ. All utility lines, including but not limited to those required for electric, communication, lighting, cable, television services, and related facilities shall be placed underground except for surface-mounted transformers, surface-mounted connection boxes, and meter cabinets which may be placed above ground. Sanitary sewers will be installed to serve each new development and to connect developments to existing mains in accordance with the provisions set forth by the city's Public Works Design Standards and the adopted policies of the Comprehensive Plan. Sewer service for tax lots 1300 and 1301 will have separate connections to the eight-inch PVC mainline in Columbia River Highway via respective six-inch PVC laterals. Tax lots 1300 and 1301 will not be consolidated and will be required to have separate lateral connections. Sewer service for tax lot 9900 is provided via four-inch PVC lateral from the existing eight-inch PVC main in southwest Old Portland Road. Existing sewer laterals will be video inspected to confirm the condition, location, inadequacy, size, and slope, and provide this information to the city and building official for review and approval prior to their use. Water will be supplied to all three tax lots from the 12-inch PVC mainline in southwest Old Portland Road. Um, the existing one-inch meter for tax lot 9900 will be removed and upgraded to a two-inch domestic water service line. Two additional two-inch domestic water meters will be installed along southwest Old Portland Road that will feed tax lot 1301 and 1300. New six-inch fire service line will be installed along southwest Old Portland Road and connected to a new uh fire hydrant that is located near the intersection of all three tax lots. Any building sprinklers may require a larger meter and piping and will require backflow device. And that concludes.
Thank you for that. Questions? Anybody have questions for the applicant?
Um, I have a question. Um, what is the proposed landscaping in the landscape buffer around? I guess around the house by Building Three?
So that is a, a 10-foot setback and that includes, um, I believe it was, um, let me get the exact number. It would be medium trees. The applicant could go with large trees, but medium has a certain 25-foot spacing criteria. Um, and that would also require shrubs planted within that 10-foot depth. It also requires a sight obscuring fence that is five feet tall and that can be of wood, um, CMU, or brick, or any other material that the city approves.
So I notice on, uh, Building Three, you've got a lot of compact stalls. What was the reason for that?
We, um, we actually added a, um, accessible path. You can see in the middle of that parking, um, array at the north. Um, we took away a parking spot so we could provide access to that area because we're so limited to the north and south uh with our setback requirements and for providing a, um, drive aisle. Um, we tried to make this a 26-foot drive aisle, but we were, we could only get to 24 feet uh while also maintaining a pedestrian path to the north and also meeting that 10-foot landscape buffer, um, adjacent to residential.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a question regarding the driveway that comes behind Peak um into the actual lot in the center of the lot. So that road there, um, it has parking to the right for the current commercial buildings. There's not a whole lot of room to go in and out of that section. I, I did hear you say that you're going to be adding two stop signs. Is that going to create the four-way stop where Fred Meyer's is?
No.
Into that area?
So that, um, there's another intersection and then it's Fred Meyer. Um, let me find the, uh, sheet that shows that and direct you. Um, on A1.
Exhibit 4H for us.
Yes.
Seventy-nine and really small type.
Okay.
So you can see the ingress, ingress and egress arrows that follow the angled parking. So that is a one-way traffic around that building.
Okay.
And so there were two additional parking spaces for Peak Fitness. And by creating that connection point, we're granting two, um, spaces specifically for Peak Fitness, which is keynoted, um, keynote 18, which is on either side of that stop sign. Um, so there will be a stop sign at that connection point and then farther down the page, um, there's an existing shopping center driveway which is at the bottom of that sheet. And so that, that is the intersection that then leads into Fred Meyer.
Yeah, so you're going to be adding the stop signs at that intersection?
I believe there is already an existing stop sign at that intersection. We were, we were adding at where I mentioned before, um, between, uh, Peak Fitness and our post lot.
Okay, so the way that road currently is, when you, if you were to drive behind Peak, it's a really small road and then you have two commercial buildings. They have their parking space right there. How are these cars going to go in and out? I see your arrows in both directions, but I don't understand how they're going to fit.
So you're, you're saying from the, um, commercial spaces that are down into the left, how would they get into our?
Well, yeah, so you have one arrow pointing as if you're going to go to Fred Meyer's, right? But then you can also enter and exit from that same area. I'm just wondering how vehicles are going to come through that intersection. Stop sign is at Fred Meyer's behind Peak into your establishment, your, uh, parking.
Yeah.
Really small road.
I mean, currently, that is an ingress and egress to that commercial space, right? So maybe that, that one single arrow is misleading that is behind Peak Fitness is.
Okay.
Just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, the way I'm looking at it, I'm not understanding how traffic's going to go in and out. And I imagine traffic is definitely going to be trying to in and out and around the other commercial buildings or, you know, just to avoid Highway 30 or, um, Old Portland Road. That's just what people do. And so they're going to end up through the other commercial establishment. And it's like, um, it's not a gravel road, but it's not quite a finish. It's just kind of weird. Um, so I'm wondering if there's directional signs or if there's something because it seems like this small section is going to be really congested.
Yeah, I'm thinking of what additional markings could be there. I mean, already it is two-way in that stretch, right? Behind Peak Fitness that runs north-south. Um, anything to the south in terms of Fred Meyer is kind of, you know, outside of this proposal, but in terms of Peak Fitness?
Yeah.
That's where you're.
Yeah, and just right behind there.
Yeah.
I understand, you know, they're going to come up the road, Fred Meyer's is, and the stop sign, and then they're going to turn right and drive behind Fitness. The left is a commercial building. As you get in between Peak, then there's a, um, like they have their own parking structure. And there's another, uh, commercial building right before the entrance to your lot. There's not a whole lot of room there, like even for two cars. So I'm just wondering, um, you know, directional wise, when people drive in here, if they're using this, it's going to create congestion. Is there some kind of signage or something so people aren't driving all the way around Peak or all the way around the other?
Yeah, so, so that, that, um, that currently, and correct me if I'm wrong, is two-way traffic. It does provide 24 feet minimum. So you can see that, um, drive dimension 24 feet at that stop sign. That does exist between Fitness and their loading dock and the property line. And there is additional space on that site too. So, yes, we would need to make sure that there are markings that show, you know, that we can go north and south there and that that is, um, two-way traffic. And then anything, um, to the, to the east of that around Peak Fitness would be a single, um, direction. And I, and I think that would accommodate those concerns.
Can I add here? Arrows that are shown here indicate a one-way pattern. It was around the building. You have two arrows which shows the entrance, but you would have to make a left as the other traffic coming toward you one way. That I understand what traffic flow is.
And so, yes, I see where the loading dock, there's only one arrow pointing down. There should be one up and down. Um, perhaps, um, adding an additional, um, stop sign at that corner right before at the, um, northwest.
One-way or whatever.
That's where there's an additional, um, stop sign because then you'd be entering, you'd be crossing traffic. So I think that would be, um, a way to kind of slow down cars that are exiting Peak Fitness. Right?
So it looks like page 194, this is in the traffic report, actually does address internal trips between the sites. And, uh, it doesn't talk specifically that I'm seeing to the signage for it, but it is anticipated. And I mean, I've been there a lot, that's where my physical therapist is, and this is one of those situations, I think, where it is not ideal, but we're dealing with existing properties trying to, trying to do their best to incorporate with or new development, trying to incorporate with old. It's just not going to work out very pretty.
Yeah.
But I, I also don't think there's going to be a lot of speed demons trying to go through there.
And I would, yeah, I would say it's not the prettiest, right? We want, you know, um, very clear markings and sidewalks, curbs, et cetera. But I would say it's better than somebody at Fred Meyer going back onto Columbia River Highway and then back into our development. I think that creates more traffic on an already congested street. So this little, um, avenue does alleviate that traffic on either southwest Old Portland Road or Columbia River Highway.
And the traffic plan also shows that they don't expect much traffic to be coming in the Fred Meyer entrance that's existing and then heading north. They expect most of that traffic to come in on the properties uh existing, you know, existing or to be existing, uh, no, Columbia River Highway.
Old Portland.
You don't have to go through an extra parking lot and I don't think many people will choose to do that just for funsies.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a few questions, but hopefully everybody will cover them. I'll have to go back to them, but, uh, the peak performance fitness, uh, is that an agreement that it's been done?
So the owner, um, uh, owns that tax lot and the subject properties. So that will, uh, that agreement will be part of the, um, approval criteria.
Uh, and then on your traffic flow pattern, you show me what you think would happen if I have a truck coming in there to drop off deliveries to my restaurants. How, oh, the traffic flow? Because I'm curious to find out whether the shoes, truck maneuvering in there and dropping stuff off.
Kind of zoom in.
They could come either from Portland Road or from the highway. Yeah, it's about either or.
Yes, currently there are no, um, loading zones as that is not a requirement. Um, however, there is, this is a larger than required parking lot. Um, so most trucks could find a stalls adjacent to drive next to to unload. Um, we, um, the amount of deliveries anticipated is not a daily occurrence. Um, it could be more of a weekly occurrence, so we're not blocking any parked vehicles or would be done, uh, when it's not overlapping hours of operation.
And I ask you, this also leaves another question, hours of operation, that question brought up. I wonder what the hours of operation.
I don't have the exact hours, um. I don't have those exact hours, at least for Building Two and Three. We don't know who the tenants would be. Um, for Building One, we are anticipating, um, Taco Bell and I, I'm not sure exactly what their hours would be either. It would be.
But these three restaurants, uh, do you call them a franchise-type restaurants or?
Uh, possibly. Most likely Building One would be franchise.
Building something and some.
We would love to have Building Three as a sit-down restaurant and something from the community. Um, but again, there's no guarantee and retail, we like something that's local. Building One is on the track to be a franchise and Building Two is still up in the air.
Uh, so I'm assuming that fire truck ability to maneuver in and out of there that would be similar to where a truck would be if it was delivering something. I'll be just say that we probably have to have, I would just like something to handle that, so. In terms of the difference in clearance.
I believe they have reviewed and said there was clearance, right, fire trucks.
If they can redirect, what is the loading zone requirement for a development of this type per code?
If any building is 10,000 square feet or more, it requires a loading zone. None of these buildings exceed that threshold. Um, and then for fire, they, they want a 22-foot fire apparatus access road, which is maintained by our parking requirement for 90-degree stalls, which is a 24-foot drive aisle.
Thank you.
The address will be to this, like, is it from the highway or from Portland Road?
Actually, presumably you would have the two that front on Columbia River Highway with an address off that street and the one that is taking its, um, frontage or main entrance off Old Portland Road would then be addressed off Old Portland Road.
So the post-op. And or the other.
Perhaps, or circulate through the site.
Uh, looks like all of the tax lots have addresses. If you look at the location on the beginning of the staff report, two Columbia River Highway and one Old Portland Road.
I got a couple more questions, but I'll wait here for somebody else.
I have another question. Um, what is, does the city of Scafus have a, uh, like a landscape percentage in parking lots?
We have, um, in the EC zone, we have a impervious, so maximum impervious zone and it's 90%. I.
I can't remember off the top of my head what this coverage is, but it's.
Doesn't exceed that. Um, we do not have a particular landscape requirement within parking lots. There are some provisions where, um, if you have parking stalls adjacent to a public street, there's some additional landscaping required along the frontage. Um, that is something we're looking to add to the code as part of the 50-year plan updates.
And then I, I just found in their landscaping plan, so tax lot 1301 is 16.79% covered by landscaping. Uh, tax lot 1300 is 27.45%, and then tax lot 9900 is 25% covered by landscaping.
Is that including tree canopy, like when the trees mature or?
Well, how did you calculate? So that, um, no, this was calculated based, if it's landscaping, then it's counted as impervious. The, um, actual canopy, uh, tree structure doesn't, we don't take that into consideration. So the total site, um, uh, pervious area is 23.1%.
I do have a question, and maybe it depends on what business truly goes in. But is outdoor seating taken into an account for any of this? Is that even an option? Is that?
It, I mean, it is an option maybe for building one and building three. There is, um, maybe a, a larger than normal, um, sidewalk. So it is a possibility. But nothing that we've, um, presented concretely. It would be, uh, minimal in size based on what's allowed.
Bill, you're up again.
So I'm not sure where this one fits, if it's the other discussion. But people that have the existing, uh, residential property that asked about a fence and whether they could get a, or whatever. Actually, masonry works fine, blocks, whatever. One concern I would have is that it would seem to be a five-foot or a six-foot. And I would think a six-foot would be more appropriate privacy. And I, that's not quite six. I could probably look over a five-foot fence. Six-foot fence will be difficult. I would see if somebody was doing something in the backyard. That might be considered for sure.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I think, um, a six-foot fence is a great compromise. I think dictating what that fence material is probably overreach. Especially if you're going to say it's brick, then we're getting into aesthetics and what they want to look at. Whereas a wood, uh, fully obscuring fence is probably more apropos to a residential environment. I agree with a six-foot fence that would be a, would be a greenable price.
And the other issue, I guess, is the last thing I've been concerned about. We established a food pod not too far down the street. See him, at least I am, having generated, I believe we thought we were going to see. That means people are going on to Old Portland Code. For people who want to go there to eat and are seeing a crowd there. They actually may be an overflow to bring business to you. And where are the other? But concerned a little bit about the traffic. But, uh, I can divide in terms of if it's going to create that much more traffic. And that it will have some indirect effect. Between the businesses, I think, some.
Where are the, um, the food carts located?
They're at the north end of Old Portland Road. Yeah, um, there's 11. I would state though that, um, on page 198. My gosh, my eyesight, NJ here. 98. It does provide the background conditions. And so the traffic study did take into account any, um, developments that were either in process or had already been approved through land use but hadn't been built out yet. So we did share those transportation impact studies for these other developments. One, two, three, four, five other developments. So they did take those trips into account when they did this study, yes.
And we, we do have Jennifer who did the traffic impact study. Um, she is on the Zoom and she can chime in. She's from Lancaster Mobley, so we might need to unmute her. Jennifer, can you unmute yourself?
Uh, let's try this now. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay, great.
Were there any additional questions, Bill, about that in terms of that being taken into account? Or just a general observation?
I guess I will. Oh, the worry was to, the traffic counts. You take into account the new recent development that have food pods on Old Portland Road. That is pretty more traffic on that road.
Yes, we do, um, need to take into account, um, what's been approved and hasn't been, has not been constructed or occupied by, you know, when we go out and collect our data. So as, as mentioned, there were five projects that were, um, added to sort of, for the background growth conditions, we have two things. One is a general growth rate. We used, uh, 2% per year for that. And then we included five additional projects. There was Thompson Woods, Buxton Ranch, Huser Estates, Scapus Food Carts, and Dutch Canyon Subdivision, where we also took the traffic from those developments and included it, added it to the background condition. So, uh, things that have been approved but have not been constructed, um, have been included in this, in our background condition before we considered this project.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have anything at this moment. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this project? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this project? Also seeing none? I'm guessing there's no rebuttal from the applicant to the noncomments. Thank you. All right. And the hearing is closed for consideration by, uh, for, uh, the planning commission to consider. I'm not working great today. So what do you guys think?
Like they satisfied. Everything and code.
Everything, uh, seems satisfactory as far as city code goes.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the application, everything is in order. Everything basically is approved or, uh, additions have approved. Either apply or don't apply or else problem with them. Um, and the only concerns that I had were brought up and were such addressed as far as I was concerned. This time, it'd be interesting to see how it would turn out.
Um, I will say for the record that the traffic study seems to omit JP West Road as a intersection that's significant, especially if you're taking into account the Hauser development and, and the Buxton Ranch approval. Seems like that should be the intersection that's considered in these kind of traffic studies.
Right now, I think we're back there.
Um, I'll just, I'll just note that we did work with both, uh, the city of Scapus and ODOT to establish what the study area would be. So, um, it was not omitted, uh, to get away with anything. It was just where we had a threshold that was considered, um, above the, the level that the agencies wanted to see the analysis or below the level that we, the agencies require for analysis.
All right, thanks. As usual, this looks like the staff handled pretty much everything. And all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, it looks like. It's just my.
Well, um, the minor variant seems reasonable. It's just a, appears to be a five-foot less width. And then that lot is even larger than lot three, so seems reasonable.
You have one year of which to get this completed or start, right? Not complete, but get started and you have one year.
One year, and then they also can, um, and typically we'll see a one-year extension request. Uh, we can easily grant that as well.
Right. Okay.
Any other comments from the commissioners that you want to bring up? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Just a reminder on whoever makes the motion to include, um, adopting the amended staff report dated June 27, 2024. Last one.
I'll help if you need it.
Okay, I will need help. A motion to adopt, uh, oh, approve. A motion to approve, um, docket number SDR 4-23, PLA 1-24, MIP 2-24, and MIV 1-23, um, as amended. Um, the staff report as amended on June 27, 2024.
Should we need all those?
Oh, yeah. With, um.
Conditions as.
Including the, including the addition, uh, conditions of approval as proposed.
Just turn it to second. I can't do this stuff.
Um, I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will offer the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, guys. That passes the land use step at least. Good luck on the next steps. And for us here, we have the calendar check. So exciting stuff. All right. So we have Scapus Farmers Market this Saturday, nine to two. You would be the guy. Monday, July 1st, there's no city council meeting. City offices will be closed on July 4th. Open on July 5th, looks like. Yeah. Uh, Saturday, July 6th, Scapus Farmers Market. Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, the 11th of July. Is that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. That is happening. Uh, Farmers Market on the 13th. Monday, the 15th, Urban Renewal Agency meeting at 6:00, followed by city council meeting at 7:00. Thursday, the 18th, the Economic Development Committee meets at noon and Parks and Rec Committee meets at 6:00. Saturday, the 20th, Farmers Market. Come to July 25th, Planning Commission meeting.
And one more.
Okay. So no Planning Commission meeting on the 25th. And then July 27, Scapus Farmers Market going strong from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. All right, Commissioner comments?
Well, job done as far as presentation by staff, as mentioned by our chair. Did a great job. It was very complex and it needed a lot of help.
Thank you.
Still allowed to ask questions.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you. It's my last meeting, so I appreciate it.
Congratulations, Bill.
Your last meeting?
Very good.
Oh, my goodness.
You're an institution.
Thank you, Bill.
That's, I've enjoyed having you on the planning commission.
Yeah.
You're going to get a little bit of recognition because you've been here for how many years?
25.
Wow.
25 years.
To get a plaque on the wall.
Yeah.
I wrote it all out here. And I, basically, I just want to say 25 years I've worked. Appreciate it, everybody. A lot in this community that's been over the years. Sure, we have a good guide to the very world. But fact is, you know, I want to think about all the things that have been accomplished. Let's say, I'd be proud of the people. City is growing. Parks has great opportunities with the public. You see, and, uh, I like trails, unlike everything else. It's going maybe in round.
I, I am going to ask you, since you have a fairly unique perspective, um, what's it been like working on, you know, the code amendment stuff? And then, you know, years and years later, actually seeing that happen? Because, well, it's, it's a view not many of us actually get to have. We, we do the work for the future and we don't necessarily get to.
The long.
Yeah.
The main thing is siding on things that you think, the way we operate. We come around and we make those changes. Make sure that changes are. Then, as we go through each one of these meetings, try to incorporate all of those. And if we're still around for a little longer, you actually see the construction and stuff. Earlier, it's people to try to go back and see what happened. Because so often, I go buy an estate. I look at it, I don't remember. Had no idea that it was good, bad, or whatever. Most times it's that good. Did a good job. Both fire, everything we could or staffed it. And it happened. On those ways. I mean, as you go to meetings and other things, your ideas, I make sure you always want.
Thank you for your 25 years of dedicated service. It, it's been a pleasure having you and, uh, you always have good, good questions. It's something I've always appreciated. And we'll miss you.
Yeah, well, shoot, I won't be far away. I might be out there.
Oh, oh, you're going to be in the audience? Awesome. I was just thinking you were going to watch the show.
Never know.
Yeah. All right, well, um.
I'm going to get this too, by the way.
Uh, why don't you give it? Why don't you give it to Lori after we end the meeting? Then I'll mention that we will be needing a new vice chair and we will be having that discussion at our next meeting. That's something we'll have to do.
Kind of threw it out. You know, you need a little kind of think about being a vice chair. It's a great experience.
I do. It's not a hard job and I know it might feel uncomfortable. I know when I started doing it, it was a little uncomfortable. But you've got great staff and they will, you know, hold your hand as much as you need. You're, it's not like you're gonna be up here on an island. You've got staff right there and they'll like you as necessary so that all the proper forms are followed. It's they've been doing a great job. They literally put together, there's, there's a script that needs to be read before opening a hearing. And, I mean, they've got it where it's, it's got all the development review numbers, everything in it, so it's, it's pretty straightforward to deal with. So I encourage you guys to consider it and we will be looking for volunteers next meeting. And if not that, we will be nominating people.
Have a good chair. All will follow as instance.
Great chair.
All right, um, well, with that bombshell, which really is a bombshell for us. Yeah. We can't even throw you anything. Your surprise is a good idea. That's how I'm exiting. Anyway, um, with that, I think we have staff comments and that's it.
Thank you all very much for your continued service to the city. Thank you, Bill, for your 25 years. When you started on Planning Commission, my mom was six months pregnant with me. February 1999, right?
Oh, I know. All right, kid.
I'll give a quick overview of what we've got going on in the planning department. We've held a few inquiry meetings since our last Planning Commission meeting, but we don't have any active requests for an inquiry meeting. We do have a couple of requests and scheduled meetings for pre-apps. The first one, which will be on July 7th, is a partition for a property on Southwest Sequoia Street. And then Ness Campbell, which is the crane and rigging service. They, they very recently held an inquiry meeting and they very quickly turned around and applied for a pre-app. So they're moving as quick as they can in the land use process. A few projects that have had pre-apps but not yet submitted for land use are Wallace Construction Company, which would be for their business office and it's southwest of Northeast Prairie and Northeast Third Street. On a credit union, which from what we're hearing, they're a transportation study away from submitting for land use. So they're really close. And their, their lot is to the south of Beymark. And then a three lot partition off of JP West Road between Eastview Drive and Maria Lane. One application has submitted for land use but has not yet been deemed complete, which is the three lot partition on Southwest Fourth Street, just off JP West. It would support three duplexes, so six units in total. We're currently reviewing their second submittal and we'll turn around some comments for them tomorrow, actually. Lori recently issued a temporary use permit for the lodge food carts to use their adjacent property as surplus parking. The permit is good from their grand opening on this last Saturday, the 22nd, to September 20th, which is a Friday. They're maxing out their 90 days for a temp use permit and they, that'll be the one they can apply for within a 365 day period. The July 11th Planning Commission meeting that was mentioned will be next for Myrtle and Oak Townhomes, a 10 lot subdivision between Myrtle Street and Oak Street that would support 10 townhomes on individual lots. And then for the 50-year plan, we're working with our consultant group to fine tune the UGB sub areas that we're looking at for a 59 acre UGB expansion and then the establishment of urban reserves for the whole 50-year land need timeline. We have a stakeholder advisory meeting coming up and currently scheduled for August 20th. It could change, but that's currently what's scheduled. And then a council Planning Commission work session sometime in September. And after those work sessions, we will begin the local adoption process here at the city level before moving on to the county. And we have to, as the city, apply for a county permit to amend their comprehensive plan map due to the UGB expansion. Coming to the, the end, but the, the end is a one-year adoption process, so.
Oh, I think you covered it. Thank you, Bill. Thank you for your service to the city. It's been a joy working with you these last almost 10 years. Thank you.
Same here.
All right, you gotta hear from me, Bill. Thanks for being a mentor. When I first started working with the city, sat between the two bills. Not the bobs. So that was great. Appreciate you helping me get up to speed on Planning Commission all those years ago. You guys, you guys always set the bar really high, so.
Be explained for the others. So Chris was a planning commissioner for 10 years here at the city before he became an employee.
So we have a little history and, and, and Bill's also a fellow submariner, so always appreciating that. Thanks for your service. As far as projects, we got a lot in our queue, thanks to Lori and NJ. They keep myself and Reid really busy. We've got more road. It's still under construction. It'll probably drag on through the summer. So just be patient out there. Kind of avoid that area if you can. It's, it's gravel right now, so. It will probably be that way for some time. Working on franchise utilities, which have gotten a little complicated. We've got a subdivision, Kale Street. You're, you're probably remember we're doing the north side. We're just going through the final setup plan review on that. We should have it going here in July, so that's exciting. Nothing to report on Buxton. I'll let Lori or NJ give any details on that if you need them. We've got Huser subdivision, which is, um, or something street up there off of JP West and Keys. We're going through our second set of, uh, land review on that. That's going really well. Expect to have them going here in, actually, they, they'll start grading, site stripping on the 8th of July. And then we'll be wrapping up their final plan review for the construction documents. So they'll have their full approval sometime in July. Dutch Canyon Phase Four, we issued early grading, so they're out there grading. So you'll see trucks on Callahan. They'll, they'll, they're kind of ramping up, so you'll see a lot more activity as the weeks go on. They'll, I'll be doing that for the next six weeks or so. So that'll be kind of busy during the, during the weekday out there. Just be aware. We are working with that little auto storage facility at the end of Northwest, Northeast First Street called Martin Hagan. We're hoping to get them into construction here fairly soon, hopefully sometime in July, early August. City has a couple of projects. See here, yeah, we've got a reservoir project, which we should get bid numbers back, I think, 11th, so coming up here pretty quick. So we'll be making decisions about who, who's doing that project and then get them going in construction. And then that'll, that'll get going pretty much as soon as they can get moving on that. I'll start doing demo and, and, and grading work. The demo will take probably two, two and a half months, so. We've also got Reach F project, which is Grabhorn Project Creek Layback Project there, where they're gonna improve the bank of the creek on Grabhorn, which is north of Veterans Park. That's gonna kick off. They've selected a contractor that should kickoff in, I believe, or in August. They've got a window of time to work in water and I believe it's like August 1st, so they
July 15th, but I don't know if they'll be ready to kick it off that soon, but yeah, they'll be in
I think they have 45 days of in-water work window, so yeah. 15th through the end of August, I believe, is that window, but. Let's see. We're working with a consultant right now on a massive waterline upgrade project in the northwest part of town. And we've been kind of adding to their scope, so we haven't wrapped up that design yet, but it'll be a, a, a big improvement to that part of town. It, that was an old, um, kind of a, a small agency water system up there. So it's really, really antiquated and lots of small, undersized pipes because it just served that small, uh, developed area that was really in the county back in the 60s, before the city annexed it in. So we kind of inherited this water system that's really ancient. So we're trying to make improvements over there. That's exciting. Oxpo site development project out there off of Scappus Fernunia Highway. We've had their plans. We've been reviewing them and, and we provided comments back, trying to get them going here over the next, you know, month or so. They're pretty anxious to get going. They're still working through some floodplain stuff, I believe. Got to address a few things, so, but it looks like it's coming together, hopefully, you know, midsummer. And that's about it for the major updates.
I have a question. Rarely.
They, they do own the lot to their west. They have the option to extend and, and do a modification of approval to their existing development to, um, you know, provide a permanent parking lot that's larger. However, um, I think the owners at this point are just waiting to see what happens and hoping that things kind of eventually smooth out. Novelty wears off, yeah. So they have that option. They're aware of it. They know they can't extend the, the temp use permit. And so we'll, we'll see, watch and wait. Yeah.
The people have been parking to the south?
Correct.
They don't own that property then?
Not currently.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just somebody's letting them
And that would be between those two property owners.
If you see any tow trucks nearby, you probably want to get out.
I would highly encourage you to park in their overflow parking lot, their permanent lot, or on Old Portland Road.
Or walk there.
Better yet, hop on your bike. They do have bicycle parking there.
Yeah, that's a great option.
Yeah.
Um, I had another question about Buxton Development. So the word on the street is it's remanded back to the city?
Yes.
And so is council going to have to reapprove this?
So council did elect to delegate their decision-making to a hearings officer. Hearings officer is a neutral third-party land use attorney who will make the decision on behalf of city council. There were four specific issues that need to be looked at. The scope of review will be limited to those issues. And essentially, yeah, additional findings would be adopted around those four issues. The city would make, would adopt additional findings. And then at that point, anytime a new decision is rendered, it is subject to a potential appeal. But that, that's the next step is that we are to adopt additional findings to support the original decision for approval.
Why, why would council delegate that? Like, is there, is that something that's typical or?
No, it's not typical, but this is a small town. There was significant ex parte contact.
Right.
There were potential, potential issues of bias. There were potential issues of conflict of interest. That's not unheard of, again, in a small town with a very, you know, visible application in the center of town and in the best interest of the city and with the city attorney's advice. That was a consideration for them and it was something they chose to do. So they could have decided it themselves, but to keep it clean, to keep the record clean, to not have to, you know, put on the record all the ex parte contacts and which, which they could have done. We, we have asked that they keep track of all that and even now to keep track of those things. But anyway, in the end, at the end of the day, they decided it was best to just go ahead and delegate that authority.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
How is the arbitrator selected then?
Our attorney provided us with about five different candidates that are suited for being a hearings officer, people that they have either worked with or are aware of that perform this work. We have reached out to those folks. A few of them have vacations within the timeframe that we need them and so they're gonna come off the table. And then after that, I will, along with the city attorney, speak with the individuals who we're considering and we'll make a decision from there.
Um, it's not coming back to planning commission?
Not to planning commission.
Okay. Any final comments? Good, I'm not seeing any. And we, we can, we can chat all we want after the official meeting's closed. So I'm gonna close the meeting here at 6:46, sorry, 8:46.